We like to start with a moment of silence, so please join us. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And this brings us to our initial matter, which is roll call.
Interpreter.
Interpreter before roll call?
No, after roll call.
After roll call. Let's do the roll call and.
Commissioner Belcheck.
Present.
Commissioner Perdue.
Present.
Commissioner Asasi.
Present.
Commissioner Kilgore.
Present.
Commissioner Knight.
Present.
Commissioner Robbins.
Present.
Mayor LaGrand.
Present. And we do have an interpreter for Spanish to English and English to Spanish. If you could introduce yourself and explain your job.
I don't think the mic's on.
Mi nombre es Sandra. Estoy aquí para interpretar, ayudarles a de español a inglés y viceversa. Y estoy aquí al servicio de ustedes en cualquier momento. My name is Sandra. I'm here to interpret from Spanish to English or English to Spanish for anyone who may need it. Thank you.
Thank you. And that brings us to public comment on agenda items. So anyone who has a comment on an item on the agenda, please come forward. Mr. Jones. Chief, you have an agenda item you want to comment on?
How y'all? How y'all doing? I'm Dee Jones, speaking on fiscal committee resolution two, no, not to do resolution one, which is the $50,000 to support the Safe Pitch Task Force. As some of you guys know, this is where I actually started my entrepreneurial venture in 2018, where I pitched and I earned a $10,000 grant to partner with the, I was working at the faith-based nonprofit, Steeple Town Neighborhood Services. And I explained to Steeple Town Neighborhood Services that I'm a visionary, already a leader, and one day I'll give back to y'all. And I started working at Steeple Town. And then I started to go through the, um, the Our Community Children Initiative. And I ended up finding out that they had the Safe Pitch Task Force. And then I worked with someone who actually earned the 20 grand from Start Garden. And this nice lady helped me refine my presentation. And I gave that in 2018. And that's how I got my entrepreneurial start. And so I know that this thing can lead to huge things, like, you know, sitting at City Hall with the city commissioners and then making it on Forbes and listening to the problems. And so I've been able to do that through the Safe Pitch Task Force. I've been able to get kids scholarships. I've been able to bring Epic Games, $32 billion company that developed Fortnite through the Safe Pitch Task Force. I've been able to get the community, our school district, also invest in the esports because of the work that I've done through the Safe Pitch Task Force. And so I'd like you guys to continue investing into that because I've been able to do some beautiful things for our community. Obviously, you guys know that I'm helping bring this event to the DeVos place. And we got that all settled in. And we're actually getting some big sponsors from outside of the community and outside of the nation, honestly, that I'll be speaking on. But just to stay on to this, I'm just thankful for the Safe Pitch Task Force because I've been able to do a lot of things for my community and give people hope, be able to bring people together and be able to really invest into our youth, invest into the future. As I knew what the future was going to be seven years ago, when I first started speaking here in 2018, when I first earned that. And then I earned another grant for $10,000 in 2024, where I was able to do that spring initiative, where we was able to bring global attention to our community. You guys probably didn't hear about it, but we made it on a lot of global publications and publications outside the state that knew of this initiative because of the investment into this city that you guys gave me, that I was able to partner with the school district. And so I wasn't, uh, I can't be angry about the infrastructure needing to be grown and the community needing to be built and the tech space, but it's definitely growing. And I'm doing everything that I can. And I know I 100% gave the city everything I got, my love, my passion, my dedication. Before I had the car to be able to buy a car, I was walking around, still getting the resources, still grinding, so I never stopped it. Now bigger things are on the horizon and global change is coming. I look forward to speaking in my next one.
Seeing no further comments, that brings us to our next action item, which is, I believe, our consent. Is it already our consent agenda? No, it is not. Pardon me. That brings us to approval of minutes. Can I have a motion?
Support.
All in favor of approving minutes of the meeting on 8/26, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Petitions and communications, Mr. Clerk.
First one, a communication received from Don Biker regarding driving and walking conditions near the Raybrook campus of Holland Home.
Received and filed.
Communication received from the Board of Directors of Heritage Hill regarding mobile GR projects in Heritage Hill.
Received and filed.
Communication received from the Board of Directors of Easttown Community Association, expressing desire for the City Commission to increase funding for stump removal.
Received and filed.
Communication received from Heritage Hill Neighborhood Association, expressing support for the Sylvan area neighbors.
Received and filed.
Communication received from Sophia Ward Brewer regarding her resignation from the Grand Rapids Police Civilian Appeal Board.
Refer to command and appointments.
Communication received from Guillermo Cisneros regarding his resignation from the Economic Development Corporation and Brownfield redevelopment.
Refer to command and appointments.
Communication received from Robert Chloe II regarding his resignation from the Urban Agricultural Committee.
Refer to command and appointments.
Communication received from Scott Atchison with a suggested name for the new soccer team.
Received and filed.
Communication received from Olivia Fussman, Garfield Park Neighborhood Association President, expressing the board's support for Sylvan neighbors.
Received and filed.
And finally, communication received from John R. Alabin regarding FOIA request number 2025-2472.
Received and filed. Next, reports of city officers, city clerk.
Comptroller's warrant report for the period of August 12, 2025, through August 25, 2025, in the amount of $204,267,925 and 0.05.
Received and filed.
Treasurer's report for the period of August 12, 2025, through August 27, 2025.
Received and filed.
And finally, city manager's report on contract and purchase approvals for January 2024 through August 2025.
Received and filed. That brings us to our consent agenda items. These are items that should pass unanimously out of committee and which were not removed for further discussion by any request of any member of the commission. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor of passing the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We had one item removed from consent, and that was an item authorizing funding for a number of organizations for promotion around Art Prize. Commissioner Robbins. Oh, I'm sorry.
I need to recuse myself because I'm on the committee for one of these organizations.
Right. And that was why it's removed from consent, simply because, so can I have a motion?
Support.
Support.
Commissioner Robbins?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. This came before fiscal committee this morning. The city of Grand Rapids and Art Prize seek to continue to enhance the experience of this event, not just for visitors, but for the community as well. So consistent with support for Art Prize in previous years, the city and Art Prize seek to collaborate with various organizations in the marketing and promotion of various cultural events, which in turn lead to just increased economic activity within the city. These organizations would be using this funding to work to promote Art Prize and their distinct memberships with the end goal of just spreading the economic impact of this event across all of our neighborhoods.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor of the grant, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. And I'll give Commissioner Wright a moment to come back in since we're done deliberation. This brings us to city commission resolutions. And for the one resolution we have on the agenda, I'd like a motion to suspend the rules.
So moved.
All in favor of suspending the rules, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And this is discussion about, again, our, as we near the end, and I don't want to ever take anything for granted, but we've had great success in negotiating labor contracts so far, and this is yet one more step in that process. Commissioner Perdue.
We need a motion.
I'm sorry, motion.
So moved.
Support.
Okay, Commissioner Perdue, you want to just explain the resolution?
Absolutely. This, this resolution summarizes recommended changes, or sorry, adjustments in non-represented employee compensation and benefits. These adjustments were designed to be comparable to those in other already approved employee agreements. And the agenda packets has more details about the, has more details, including the three-year step increase of 5%, 4%, and 4%.
Any discussion? I will point out for the public that this actually does trigger, the pay for people on commission actually tracks this agreement. And so I think this may be the definition of a conflict dilemma because it does affect all of us, but we also have to vote on it. So I'm not sure how we, I'm not sure how you technically get around that, except by acknowledging the, acknowledging the alignment there about Commissioner Asasi.
Well, we're governed by the local officers' compensation committee. So since they had made that decision that we would follow the appointed, I think we'll be okay.
You're not voting on your own compensation.
Yes. And we don't, and we don't have contracts.
Fine. We already debate this to death. I was just, I was just pointing out, and just so the public understands the implication of this, is that rather than inflation eroding the earning powers of all of our employees, which is why we give them, I hope raises that generally ward off inflation, the same thing is true of this contract. So all in favor of the resolution approving this? Seeing, if there's any further discussion I should have asked, I'm sorry. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. That brings us to ordinances to be adopted. Can I have a motion to suspend the rules for the two ordinances we are going to be discussing?
So moved.
Support.
Thank you. And can, pardon?
Vote.
Right. I was getting that.
Sorry.
All in favor of suspending the rules, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Now, I'd like a motion for the salary ordinance for non-represented and executive employees of the city of Grand Rapids. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? This is the thing we just discussed 10 seconds ago, so that makes sense. But this is a roll call votes, Mr. Clerk.
Commissioner Asasi. Commissioner Robbins.
Yes.
Commissioner Perdue.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Belcheck.
Yes.
Commissioner Kilgore.
Yes.
Mayor LaGrand.
Yes.
Can I have a motion for immediate effect?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor of immediate effect, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to salary ordinance for appointed officials for the city of Grand Rapids. Can I, motion?
So moved.
Support.
Commissioner Asasi. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. This is the salary ordinance for appointed officials as previously noted. They will follow the, the following schedule, 5% increase effective this year of 2025, so retroactively 4% July 1 of 2026 and 4% on July 1 of 2027. Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, again, this is a roll call votes, Mr. Clerk.
Commissioner Robbins.
Yes.
Commissioner Perdue.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Belcheck.
Yes.
Commissioner Kilgore.
Yes.
Commissioner Asasi.
Yes.
Mayor LaGrand.
Yes. And can I have a motion for immediate effect?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor of giving this immediate effect, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. This brings us to public hearings.
Did we, we skipped one?
I think so.
Number one?
She, he just didn't turn it over to you.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. Sorry about that, Commissioner.
I was like, what happened? Okay.
I explained it and didn't give you the courtesy. I'm sorry. I apologize for the, for the lapse. So that brings us to public hearings. And first public hearing we're going to have is convening a public hearing to sit as board review to hear appeals of special assessments nuisance roles. And our assessor is coming up as we speak.
Good afternoon. So back in July of 29th this year, the city commission issued an order for the assessor to create the special assessment role of unpaid charges or code violations issued between January 2025 through June of 2025. And these charges stem from miscellaneous services such as housing and yard violations, rental certifications, and blight monitoring. Property owners were notified of the charges and sent notices on August 8th, included the amount of the charge, as well as information on the appeal process. And the special assessment role has been open for public viewing for at least two weeks, started August 8th and through today, September 9th. And in addition, the assessment role has been posted on the city's website. We've received six appeals to date, and today is the final date that the city commission convenes to hear appeals of these assessments. And I will be in room 921 in order to take in any other appeals.
Anyone from the public wishing to be heard? Then this hearing, seeing none, this hearing is now closed. That brings us to public comment on any item. So anyone wishing to be heard by the commission can come up to the microphone. Mr. Jones, again.
How y'all doing? I'm Dee Jones, passionate entrepreneur and visionary. So I want to give you guys a handout. So I've been speaking to you guys about the streaming platform, Parti, P-A-R-T-I, that's on the blockchain, that has the digital finance and the points that you earn that can be converted into cryptocurrency. They'll be launching their coin at the end of the year. But I'm actually verified on X, the social platform, because of the streaming platform. So I'm actually an influencer verified on X because of this. So celebrity status, famous status. And then the same streaming platform that I'm speaking to you guys about, the second handout, they're actually going to be sponsoring the esports finals at the DeVos place. So the streaming platform that's based in Dubai, that has these big, famous streamers that live a luxurious life, they're also going to be sponsoring the esports finals here in our local community. So I was able to get a big tech company, as we know, LinkedIn posted an article that this is the number one city, rise for tech. And so I got a tech company to directly invest into the youth because the nonprofit, the 501(c)(3) that's going to be bringing this esports finals, they pay the staff nothing, the coaches, everyone gets paid nothing to provide the opportunity for our students to be able to advance. And the cool thing about this esports finals at the DeVos place, not only are colleges, high schools, and universities across the United States are going to be there, but 50% of the participants that are going to be competing at this esports finals at the DeVos place are going to be students from Kent County. So we'll really be able to build that infrastructure and be able to get that social impact and investment that we need for our county to grow and ethically and equity be able to help them grow. And then the third handout, I just learned today because I follow a lot of cryptocurrency organizations, and I found out that Donald Trump, his social platform, the truth platform that he developed, even though he lies on this platform a lot, he just actually adopted the same type of point system that Parti already had, that we're actually going to use to ethically grow the community, to ethically grow the United States and eventually the United Nations, because I just got another invite a couple of days ago to another country for this United Nations thing. And so the same point system that I spoke to you guys several times at City Hall, Donald Trump just adopted the same point system, different volumes, different companies. But we're going to have a social impact across the United States. And this tech company is already investing into this esports finals so we can have that technical advancement and digital equity. And then the last one, I am speaking at the Computer Science for Michigan Conference in Lansing, September 23rd. So I know that's going to be at 7:00 PM. I'll be speaking at 8:00 PM, giving a presentation on how esports and gaming can, description here, education, educating educators and institution, how esports and technology and gaming can create digital equity for students and institutions. So I'll be there in Lansing the day that we actually have to have City Hall. So I'll come back and I'll speak to you guys about how I was able to network, give this presentation, and how we're going to take over the globe equitably. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Aaron. I missed a special assessment, a special assessment. And I was wondering, because I got a violation for $1,000 and $138.90 for having a secondary resident. And they said that my secondary resident had to be a rental. And so I was wondering how does a secondary resident have to be a rental if I'm the one living there? That's all.
Hello, friends. Mark from Grand Rapids. I knew this was bound to happen. Thanks to the warrants felon, the Supreme Court is allowing, is going to allow racial profiling of all Latinos across the country. Doesn't matter if they're here legally, legally or illegally. They're going to profile them, they're going to pull them over. It doesn't matter if they're driving, walking, whatever. What's going to happen? Nobody knows. But it will, but it's going to happen. It's already been laid down. So if you are any Latino, you better keep your head on the swivel. Because y'all are in for a rude awakening. And in addition to that, the Asians are in for a rude awakening as well. Because ICE has rounded up, ICE rounded up over 400 Asian people in a Hyundai plant down in Georgia. That included a bunch of Hyundai executives from Hyundai International in South Korea who flew, who flew in. And as soon as they touched ground, they were also rounded up. I would not be surprised if Hyundai International will move all their manufacturing plants out of the United States. And the dealerships who sell them vehicles could be out of business. This is the reason why. Y'all effing around and you're finding out. Ask them farmers in Arkansas who voted for them. They're finding out big time. Their farms gonna go belly up. And, and in reality, I have no sympathy for them because that's who they voted for. So they have to suck it up and deal with it. Boycott Tesla.
Mr. Walsh.
Good afternoon. Good to see you, Mayor. Some Mr. Kilgore and some of the other folks I know up here. Pete Walsh, I've been a resident of the city for almost 50 years. I've been an attorney in West Michigan for almost 50 years. I live over on Plymouth near Boston. The Sylvan Adams situation is of great concern to me. I've kept my mouth shut now for almost a year and a half and decided I've waited long enough, especially when I saw that other neighborhood associations are jumping in. I'm familiar with these types of cases because in my legal career, I successfully sued the city of East Grand Rapids over a similar situation back in the 1980s. I understand that in 2002, the Michigan Supreme Court reversed what was then, what was called trespass nuisance doctrine, exception to qualified immunity. And that has remained the law since then. There's four points I wanted to make. First of all, with regard to this incident, this is not the first time this has happened. I could not find the record of the first time it's happened until today. Just before I came down here, I said, I'll take one more crack at that and see if I can find it. January 23rd, 2013, at the corner of Adams and Gladstone, there was a water break, the water rolled down Gladstone. It apparently flooded eight houses, this is from M Live, the Grand Rapids Press. It flooded eight houses. And I know for a fact it inundated the house at the bottom of the hill, and they almost tore it down at that time, rather than, rather than fix it. With regard to this incident, from my observations, there's more to it. Not only did the city get out there and fix the water main break, they dug up a huge hole over the Silver Creek drain because it appears to me that for some reason that water went down the hill to the Silver Creek drain and had no place to go. I have, I don't know why, but you can go, you drive down the street now, there's a huge patch right over the Silver Creek drain from the work they did right after this incident happened. Right, the city appears to be relying on government immunity. Government immunity does not ban you from paying these claims. I've heard that several times. It is not true. Although it's, there's some technicalities to it, and it's more complicated than this. Governmental immunity is an affirmative defense that the city can rely on. They don't have to rely on it. You folks fix pothole damage, I think, that you probably don't have to fix as a courtesy, courtesy to the citizens, but you don't have, probably don't have to do that. So you're not banned from settling this case. And with regard to governmental immunity, that case in 2002, I think it's Boholsky versus Allen Park, that was decided by a heavily, did I run out?
You did run out.
I'm sorry, I looked up and I saw.
You're a lawyer, so I'm going to hold you to your three minutes.
Pardon?
You said you were a lawyer, so I'm going to hold you to your three minutes. But we'll, we'd be happy to talk to you afterwards.
That's fine. I looked up and I thought I saw a minute 55. I must have killed it quicker than I thought.
I'll put it in writing.
Seeing no further comments, that brings us to comments from my colleagues. Commissioner Belcheck.
Mayor.
I'm sorry.
If I may, on, on.
If I may, on, on, in line with the, Mr. Walsh's comments.
You can go first then, Mr. Commissioner.
I just, do we have an update on that, on that case, Mr. Strom, on the water main break case at all?
Uh, no changes from my, uh, perspective since the last time. We, we had been communicating and expecting and hoping for the communication from the adverse counsel that we were, um, working with proactively, but, uh, to my knowledge, we have not received any additional communications.
Okay, thank you. And yeah, I have no comments tonight. Thank you for this afternoon.
Uh, Commissioner Knight? Commissioner Robbins?
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, just two quick things. I, first of all, appreciated our follow-up on the discussion of the financial disclosure process that we've been, um, deliberating about the past couple of weeks. Um, I, I think, to your point, as, as you mentioned, um, trust in, in public institutions, but specifically in government, has certainly waned over the past couple of years. And so, um, in my opinion, if this is, you know, one thing we can do to help rebuild trust with the public about who we are, where we come from, and, and why we're in this role, I think that's certainly something that, uh, would be of us to do so. Looking forward to helping facilitate that conversation, um, when it comes before us at fiscal committee in the coming weeks. Um, and then, second of all, I wanted to lift that, uh, September is Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. Um, serving in the military, I think this is something that I've, uh, personally been impacted by. Um, even in my, my reserves unit, we've, um, had a couple individuals, um, who became victims of, of suicide. And so, um, just always wanted to lift to the public that, you know, if there's ever anything you need, we are a, a community that's very fortunate to have a lot of good resources, um, as it pertains to mental health. There's always, um, additional room for improvement in that area. Uh, but I think now is more an important time than ever to, to lift that discussion up. So, um, if you ever need to talk, reach out to a loved one. And, um, I assure you that, um, there are far more people in this world who care about you than you would expect, and, uh, and many of them would be honored to lend a near. So just wanted to make sure that was mentioned. And with that, have a good rest of your day.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Usasi?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just, it's been a full day. Glad we've been able to work collectively together on our contract negotiation. So, you know, um, I think I was asking, you know, what I was most interested in reviewing today, and this is, um, our job is to, to kind of keep these things going and the business of the city going. So having those contracts, um, might seem small, but it's a really important part to our bargaining union, the units, our leadership, and all of us up here. So I appreciate that. Um, thank you to those who came out for the Welcome Week proclamation. I know there's a lot of work that goes alongside of that. Um, in particular, um, you know, just appreciate the connection points with the city and the county. And I think, um, it's always a good time to remember that we should be a welcoming city, that our city has, has had a history of being a welcoming city to those who are new Americans, who are immigrant refugees. Um, and I hope that can continue. I read something yesterday, um, just applying for a grant, and it talked about, you know, kind of the importance of, you know, this Welcome Week, which, you know, some might ask, you know, they're doing an event, what are they doing? And I think it is really shifting, shifting the narratives about what does it mean to be an American, really to be a United States, uh, citizen to live in this country. And, um, the Butterfly Lab, Butterfly Lab that works on immigration issues talked about the fact that narratives move faster than policy in our country. And so we need to kind of keep on telling these stories, keep on investing in these cultural events, tying them to other signature events in our city. Celebrating this week, um, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday will be, uh, the Fiesta Mexicana, the oldest cultural, um, event in the city, um, that people, three generations of my family have participated in. And so I hope people will go down there and support. Um, and don't tell anybody, but my favorite food is Italian food, not Mexican food, but I just told everybody. Um, but I will be down there supporting and appreciate, um, city manager and executive staff, and especially our, our special events team, Ms. Pittman, because there's a lot of things going on in the city right now. Um, we're getting ready for our prize. We're getting ready to host a conference and welcome other municipal colleagues next week. So we hope that they fill your restaurants and our parks and spend some money in our beautiful city. And, um, just, I want to echo what you said, Commissioner Robbins, just, um, I think especially now more than ever, just, uh, that reminder and appreciation, just check on people, see how they're doing. So thank you for saying that as well. Thanks. Have a good evening.
Thanks. Uh, Commissioner, uh, Perdue? No? Yeah. Uh, Commissioner Balchak?
Uh, good afternoon, and thank you for all the work that the city staff to continue to do that. I've been out in the city and I'm really appreciative of, uh, believe it or not, all the yellow trucks from the city. So thank you for what you're doing. Um, I'm very invested in what's happening in our neighborhoods, as many people know. And, um, I just want to encourage folks to continue to use our city services and call when you have a question. We have 311, but we have also our, all of us. And, um, we also have other people and other staffs, OPA, um, if you have questions about, um, things going on in the community, and you have ideas about training, uh, that could help our public safety folks. Um, and, you know, if you want to make strong, safe neighborhoods, and we want to take care of each other, which we all, which I have been saying for a long time, care and compassion is what we need now more than ever to build community. Um, I, in light of some of the things my colleagues have said, I have recently learned that with the epidemic of isolation and loneliness that we have experienced in our country, it only takes six people. It only takes six people for you to say hello to, get to know on your block, in your neighborhood, at the corner cafe that you visit, et cetera. So, um, who are the six people you can check in on, outs, and build a relationship with outside of our, of your normal sphere? And I think we talked a lot about that at the Neighborhood Summit in May. So I think it all comes full circle. And I just want to offer that I'm here for that, too. I will be inviting folks to the Blue Dog Tavern on September 25th, the Thursday at 5 o'clock, if you feel like meeting some six folks with me. That's it.
Thanks. Um, city clerk?
I have nothing today.
Uh, city attorney?
Take a moment of privilege on my first meeting as interim city attorney to, again, express my, uh, thanks and my, uh, grace to you all for your trust and, uh, your communication. You have, for me, a commitment to be, uh, engaged, to be clear, to be connected, and to be consistent in, in my legal advice, and from the legal advice from our department. Uh, I look forward to sharing both short and longer term goals that, that I see in front of us as a, as legal issues in the municipal realm. Uh, some serendipitous moments from today, uh, the Welcome Week, having moved here six years ago, knowing really no one, not having any family, and moving two little kids down here. Uh, the proclamation, those aren't just words, they mean a lot to people. Uh, my brother has since moved, and he lives on the west side now. And so, uh, things like that go a long way. Um, and then to see all the great work being done at the MLK Park Lodge and, uh, the park down there, I walk my dog around there every morning. And so to see the progress it's made every day, and to see the staff, uh, so dedicated and so connected to such a community gem was really nice. For my first day as interim city attorney, to see some of those projects that are right in my backyard is really cool. So, thanks again.
City manager?
Thank you, uh, Mayor, and, uh, welcome, Mr. Strom. I thought you were going to announce this, uh, your predecessor. Um, and, and congratulations on your first day. Um, the community is invited to celebrate, uh, his predecessor, uh, city attorney Anita Hitchcock, after 23 years of service, on tomorrow at 4:00 PM at the Van Andel Arena, Accrashire Lounge, from 4:00 to 7:00 PM. We'll have remarks, uh, I guess around 4:30?
Five.
Five remarks will begin at 5:00. Mayor's holding that flyer up. Um, so again, thank you, thank you, uh, to the staff this morning for, for all the work. And I, I echo, um, sentiments on, uh, the inclusivity and intentionality of the Welcome Plan. Uh, it was not responsive to what happened. We were already planning to do that. That's just who we are. And so we weren't reacting to what happened, uh, at the federal level. We, that's just part of our DNA, has been and will continue to be. Um, I do, uh, want to, uh, give a shout out to, first of all, all the commission. I look forward to all of your participation during the Miss, Michigan Municipal League meeting, uh, since you all have voted to allow yourselves to be registered, uh, on the record. And I want to also give a special shout out to Commissioner, uh, Knight and Usasi, who have been instrumental in helping to host, um, the, uh, NBC Leo gathering, uh, help, help us to co-sponsor NBC Leo gathering for, uh, some of our guests from out of town. And look forward to seeing all the commission there as well. And the mayor will also be hosting a group of mayors. And so it'll be a great, uh, time this week, uh, next week in the midst of our prize and tech week. Um, I do want to thank this commission for your vote today. And I don't take it for granted either on, uh, contractual labor negotiations that can be very complex and difficult, uh, in many different organizations. But we have worked through these matters very collaboratively with all of our labor groups. And today, what you did, you made just about everybody in this room happy. Uh, those of you who are part of the non-represented group, raise your hand. That is everybody, including everybody on the dais. So they have patiently waited to see, uh, make sure that we can take care of the majority of workforce. And now we want to, we gotta clap back there. Let them know that we are taking care of them. So I appreciate, uh, that on behalf of all the non-represented employees. And, uh, I do want to highlight, I want to thank, uh, the Economic Development Project Team, uh, for their deliberation today on MLBE policy, but also in the Development Center report and highlight for the public. We have been challenged in recruiting, uh, and retaining, uh, many of the skilled trades, but specifically electrical inspectors. And what the Civil Service Commission has done in allowing us to adjust the salary range for electrical inspectors, and what this commission has done in allowing us to contract out for third-party inspections, has resulted in improved, uh, inspection time. We were three weeks behind. And the report we got today is that we're nine days behind. And I think our turnaround goal is four days. Am I recalling that right, Ms. Behrens? Four? Sure. She says sure. Uh, so, so we are closely getting back to, to normal, and it's because of the resources that you've been providing. And I think we should be fully staffed in the next couple of weeks, was the report that we got. So looking forward to getting back on track. We got a lot of projects in the hopper and things that are on the ground. Speaking of Martin Luther King, uh, Community Center, looking forward to the opening of that, the grand opening of that once it's completed. Thank you.
Thank you. So, um, that was a lot of positive, uh, uh, commentary, and a lot of positive things are going on in our city. Um, I want to, I, I, I am compelled, uh, to end this on sort of a somber note. And, um, Mark, um, I hear you. I appreciate your, uh, federal watchdog commentary, even though we're not the federal government. Uh, you've never made the mistake of trying to lay something at our feet, uh, which we did not control, but you've lifted up those issues. However, I think there is a point that has to be made here, uh, given the implications at the federal level. And so I will say this, uh, we have long said that this commission will not countenance unconstitutional acts. And we will not lend aid and support to unconstitutional actions and agendas. And I, having read the Supreme Court decision that came out this week, um, believe that they are flat out wrong. I think that, uh, allowing someone's skin color to be reasonable suspicion for detention runs absolutely contrary to the founding principles of this country. And I cannot see a way in which that is possibly a constitutional, uh, a constitutionally allowable conclusion. Um, I have a young man staying in my house right now, who is, uh, Dutch and has white skin and a Dutch accent. And I don't think that anybody is going to be, uh, that he has to be at risk of being, uh, or worried about being rounded up by ICE, um, because he has a Dutch accent. There is no doubt in my mind, uh, that, uh, tying someone's accent or their language, uh, uh, of choice, uh, and their skin color to detention is absolutely un-American. And, uh, I will say this, I've said this before, and I will say it again, this commission does not have an army. We do not have the means to oppose ICE, but we do have a choice in whether we participate in activities like that. And I will say, not on our watch is, is our law enforcement going to start discriminating based on skin color or on accents or on language choice. And I know that I speak for everyone on this dais, that, that our commitment on that is crystal clear. And our resources and our efforts are not going to be bent in that direction, um, by a Supreme Court that I think is flat out wrong. Uh, we are bound by the Constitution. So on that rather sober note, um, thank you all for being here and enjoy the rest of your week. We're, uh, we are not adjourned. We are, uh, moving back into our closed session for a review of employee. So thank you all.